Good evening and welcome to the Milford Select Board Meeting of July 29, 2024, at 6:00 PM in Room 3 of Milford Town Hall. First agenda item is signing of the warrant.
Chairman, I make a motion we sign the warrant for July 15, 2024.
And I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would make that unanimous. The next is the approval of the executive session meeting minutes of July 15, 2024.
That's fine, we'll step back. That's fine. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the executive session minutes of July 15, 2024.
And that's a second also too, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the minutes of the regular session meeting of July 15, 2024.
And I second that too also.
And I would make that unanimous. Next agenda item is public hearings. We have public hearings tonight. Scheduled appointments. We have our police chief here with parking recommendations. Chief, Casino?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
So, we're going to do the parking first? Is that what we're going to talk about?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So, where this came, how this came about is actually a combination of a couple things. So, we receive obviously complaints about traffic, parking, you know, people parking opposite people's driveways, people parking in front of people's driveways, congested streets, congested roads, myself and the town administrator's office. So, we've been working on this quite some time. This isn't something that we just shot from the hip. And what we did is, we basically broke the town down and I went to his office, picked up one of his administrative assistants, and we actually drove to these locations. You know, her and I, she had a list, I had a list. We physically drove to these locations, we saw the problems firsthand, and we kind of went back and forth within the traffic rules and regulations in a way to mitigate these things. In my opinion, the only way to mitigate certain problems is to just eliminate parking on the side of the street. And you see that list in front of you that you have. So, if you go down the list, like I said, we're going through different sections of town. This is just the first section that we looked at. We're going to be looking at the rest of the town. And, you know, a big problem we have here too is, I think there's a big miscommunication as far as where you can park, how long you can park, in a public way, right? You know, 20 feet of an intersection, you can't park on top of people's driveways, that's another problem that we see. You can't park opposite a driveway, and that's confusing. People ask, what does that mean? Well, if there's a driveway here, you know, if you're driving on the street and there's a driveway to your left, but on the right side, directly across from that driveway, is an open section of sidewalk, even though it's not posted or not painted, you can't park there. Because somebody pulling in and out of their driveway, you've just narrowed their swing, okay? That's already in our parking rules. We amended that last time, I think, when I was here a couple months ago. And that has been very favorable to us. And again, it's a learning curve, right? We try to get the message out about these changes. But the changes that I bring before you tonight, basically, it's making parking on one side of the street or another. We looked at these streets and what we tried to take into effect was pedestrian traffic, the proximity to stop signs, intersections, you know, the side of the road that had the least amount of driveways, stuff like that. So, we didn't just, you know, throw a dart at a board and come up with these regulations and stuff like that. A lot of this, a lot of time and effort went into this. And I know that it, some of it might seem a bit excessive, but that's why we're here. You know, we can talk about it and we can certainly revisit things if the board thinks we need to.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, can I just ask the chief a question first before we go on? Chief, the zoning bylaws that we have that would address parking, do you know what they are offhand?
So, you're talking about two different things.
Like, say, in a apartment.
Talking about the parking rules.
Like, an apartment house or something like that. How many spaces are allowed per occupant, per apartment?
Yeah, so, all part of an occupancy permit, right? And that's through the building department. There has to be so much parking allotted for, especially new construction, okay? And anytime they remodel stuff, there has to be parking for so many vehicles. And that's an interesting point you brought up. So, during this research, we'd go to a street and there'd be a lot of cars parked on the street. Well, the first thing you do is you inquire about where these cars belong. And a lot of what I ran into was interactions with these families, and I'd say, why is your car in the street? Well, that's because my son gets home after my wife and doesn't want to block her in, which makes sense.
Makes sense, yeah.
But, you know, my mother used to say to me, honey, if you're going to park your car behind me, you have to move the cars before you go to bed, because I have to get up and go to work in the morning. So, you know, parking in the street just for a convenience, to me, doesn't really seem to make sense, right? Why wouldn't you want to move the cars in your driveway the way you need to move them out? I mean, I get it, it makes total sense. But, to leave the cars in the street, we're narrowing roads, you know, and I always bring up Whitney Street. I always bring that up. Whitney Street, you could land a plane on each side of the road.
Right, it's a wide street.
It's a wide street and it's not going to be a problem. Well, Milford wasn't designed like that. And we weren't designed to be parking cars in the street from the get-go, right? Because you think of how many households didn't have cars back in the day. And then now, everybody has a car. And now households have more than one car. I mean, I know, I speak for a lot of friends and family that they grew up in a household that had one car. And that's not the case anymore. So, you know, it's not something that we need to do on every street, certainly, but on these streets, I feel like it's something that we need to do. And if there's a couple streets that are in question that we need to take another look at, well, that's, you know, this is just the first bite at the apple.
My concern is this. I think what we're doing, we're taking a concern, people parking within, in front of their own homes. And the chief touched on a very valid point. You know, many of these homes were built and there's a single driveway, and yes, you end up stacking two cars. And now, in that household, you have two parents, two kids, it's four cars. So, times change. The community has adapted, I think. I mean, I drive all over this town, and you go down Grove Street is on there, you go down Grove Street, you have to work your way, you duck in, you come out. You go by Olivas, you duck in, you come out. Same with Franklin Street, and then a number of these streets, you know, Madden Ave, I looked at them, I drove, I actually went on them this weekend. Union Street, and they're, the people on those roadways live in that neighborhood. And essentially, what we're telling them is, you cannot park in front of your home. Other people can on different streets. And I just, I think what we're going to do is, as we did when we said, we want people to park vans, construction vans, ladder vans, whatever term you want to give, you know, and the board wanted them moved. So, I did it. I came back to them, the recommendation was, the only place you can go is the public lots. And lo and behold, two months later, up rule. Can't park to go to Sacred Heart Church, can't park to go to this church, can't, you know, to this business, et cetera. So, that gets reversed. So, we're right back where we began. And my concern is, are we moving vehicles from one residential street to another to avoid a $25 fine ticket, only to go to that street and say no? And what's the next street, the next street, the next street? Where are people going to park? You're not building the new driveways. We talk about zoning. You're not building new driveways. It's not zoned for it. So, I have some concerns, and I don't dispute what the chief is saying. Is it something that an ambulance or a fire engine has to work their way through? I mean, on Union Street, I don't see it. On some of the others that are commuter, you know, people cut through routes, I call them. You know, when we talk about Franklin and Grove and some of those streets, yeah, there's the potential of that conflict. Trust me, the fire engine's going to win. So, I think we have to take a second look to see what, how many cars are on the street that we're actually displacing. I looked Grove Street. Want to move it over to the yard side, you're losing 25 spaces. Jefferson. You want to move it so it's only on the yard side, you're losing 16 spaces. They're going somewhere. And they're going to go to other streets. I have a concern, and I did, I talked to the chief about these points. So, this isn't, no conflict, not a mystery. And I appreciate that he went out on his own, along with staff from Town Hall. But, you take North Bow Street here, and I raise it with the chief, it says, we want to move it to the yard side of the street, which is opposite Senior Center. So, now Seniors, we just changed Spring Street so that people coming out of Spring Street don't get hit because of this curve right down the street. So, now, we're going to have Seniors cross the street blinded by that curve. I just, I would simply ask that we take a second look. Is what we're trying to accomplish going to be done without creating simply a bigger headache two streets away? That's the sense I have. And I think the residents should be able to park in front of their own home. You know, not they own that space, it's a public way. No one owns a space in front of the house. Someone else parks there, you can't come and tell them to leave. But, can I come home from work and put my car in front of my house? That's my concern.
I agree. And, Chief, I appreciate what you've done, but I was kind of taken back by, in my opinion, the street that's not on your list is Hayward.
Because we're one section of town. Like I said, we're doing, we broke the town up. You know what I mean? We're looking at parking, myself and Liz, and going from section to section.
Okay. But, and again, you know I have the utmost respect for you.
I appreciate that.
I do. But, if we were looking at a parking concern, only because I live it every single day, Hayward and East Street, which I just learned, East Street's a continuation of Hayward Street. To me, that's a street that we should be focused on, because that's a cut-through for traffic on Route 16. I deal with it every single day. And so, I understand and I appreciate what the chief is saying, you know, Memory, Madden, you know, North Bow, Jefferson, I get it. But what about the street that we're dealing with traffic every single day? Why aren't we looking at that?
No, we are, it's just.
And I take your recommendation.
Yeah.
But, personally, I think that should be on the top of the list.
Yeah, sure.
You know?
Mr. Chairman, we did look at it, and what we found, we did the no parking on those corners, I'm talking about Mount Pleasant. And then the chief came in and we did additional no parking on East.
Right.
Because East is actually narrower than Hayward. Even that, we found, where were they parking? Right around the corner on Mount Pleasant. So, then you get in the phone call from the highway department, where they have an ice storm and they have a sander coming down, and it's icy, because the sand's on the back of the truck. And there's cars parked on both sides, legally. You know, so they're worried they're going to slide into them. That's where I get into, and I did discuss with the chief openly, we had a really good discussion. Are we just taking problem from Street A and moving it to Street B?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, thank you for this survey that you did too, and the time that you put into it. In my opinion, from what I could see too, and I, you know, Tom and Mike did come up with some good points too, but this is long overdue. I mean, there's not a day, a week that goes by that I don't get a complaint from someone about parking and the dangerousness of it. You know, I mean, it's something, like I said, that's long overdue, and to reform our parking situation, which has been around for years and years, it takes a lot of persistence and a lot of courage too, and I appreciate that as well. And again, with our reform, we're still going to go through the same struggle.
Yeah.
And again, you know, maybe not all the streets, but maybe they can be raided and something done. Because like I says, it's, you know, to have parked cars on one side of the street poses some sort of safety condition.
Yep.
A kid can be dotten out from the street or whatever. Again, the way they made, when they made streets back then, they didn't make them for five and six cars per family. And now parking on both sides even makes this even worse, I think. You know, and there's times when I'm trying to make a turn onto a street, I have a smaller car, I have to wait for another two or three cars to come by, let alone an emergency vehicle.
Correct.
So, again, it's something that we should really consider and really continue. Again, Mike came up with Hayward Street. I remember dropping my friend Lenny Izzo off from the Board of Health meeting up on Pine Street. That's another.
Yeah.
Trouble. Again, I don't, I don't see it as taking anybody's rights away. I just take it as a town wisely using their limited resources. That's how I look at it. And like I said, I mean, like, I mean, it's not just you and Rick or whoever that, you know, are getting the complaints, we're all getting them. And they're legitimate. I mean, there's times, again, to repeat myself for effectiveness, I'm driving down, let's say Pearl Street, and I can't make a turn.
Yeah. Yeah, it's bad.
I mean, it's not only the parking on both sides, but they're parking extremely close right at the intersection. You've got to pull out to see if another car's coming.
Right.
Like I said, it's something that we should, we should still address and still keep on it. Again, it's long overdue and it needs the persistence to continue this. And I'm all in favor of it, again, not maybe on all the streets right now, but at least take some that are most considered, that we say that are considered a danger or some where an emergency vehicle can't get by. Because don't forget, you guys, you and Tom know more than anybody, it's precious moments, seconds, that could keep somebody alive or not. And for them, just to have the convenience to park in front of their house doesn't really cut it when it comes to health and safety.
Yeah, like I said, we can, you know, this is just to get a dialogue going, and we can certainly revisit this. And I think what I'll do, you know, or what I'll put together, I think that'll be helpful for all of us, but for people at home, is put together a video presentation of these streets.
Right.
See what we're looking at.
And like I said, I think more, more owners should be on the property owners. If they rent out a house to four or five, six guys, and they each have a car or two, it should be up to that property owner to say, hey, you can't park, find another place to park your cars.
Yeah.
Whether it's in town or out of town, I mean, it's not up to us to find a place for them.
Right. Yep.
Tom?
No, I mean, the issue of parking on corners has been an issue forever. It's already regulated. Can't do it. So, Police Department has the ability to tag them, those that are flagrant, you know, when we had the trouble right out here, where the trash truck couldn't even get in.
Right.
We made it a tow zone.
Right.
So, to your comments, my colleague Paul, that, you know, we can, we can put on certain corners that we know are flagrant, and we make it a tow zone. So, you not only tag them, you just tell them. So, that person gets a real quick appreciation, once they get the tow bill. You can't park in the corner. Because that does hinder, not only U-turning, but public safety vehicles, and I appreciate Whether I rent an apartment, and there's five of us living there, or I own the house and there's five of us living there, I don't see a difference. The fact is, many of the driveways on these particular streets, the most you're going to get into them is two, maybe three vehicles on a stretch. And if we're going to treat the renters in a certain fashion, then we should treat the homeowners in like fashion.
Absolutely. No, no, it's just a good, it's just a buddy.
I just, someone parking in front of their own home, you know, I can park in front of my own. I just, I don't see it. I, Hayward Street, if you look at it, as chaotic as it can be, I mean, it's chaos in progress. Nevertheless, how many vehicles travel on that roadway every day safely? They make it through. You'd be surprised at the number, tens of thousands, that actually come down that roadway every single day. When's the last time a fire engine crashed on that roadway? When's the last time an ambulance? And I don't want to see it happen. What I'm saying is, I don't want to displace it to another street and make it more chaotic in that particular neighborhood. That's all I'm asking, and that's what I want. I'm not saying don't do these things. I'm saying, give me an idea, and I think the chief raised it. Give me an aerial view, so we see where they're going to park. Because, look, they're not going to magically go rent space in another town somewhere else. It's not going to happen. It didn't happen when we moved the vans into the lot and everybody was upset then. And I just think we have to take a good focus on that neighborhood, the surrounding streets, because that's where they're going to park. They're going to park short walking distance, meaning right around the corner, so they don't get a $25 ticket or tow. And I just, that's what we're sending to those neighbors. A bigger headache. And I, I think we ought to take a look at, not should we do some of these things, can we actually see what the repercussions will be? That's all.
He says, try it out. Like I said, see what the, if you can rate the most important.
Yeah.
You know, to us too.
Yeah.
So, like I said, like Tom said and Mike said, we can take a peek at it and continue it, but we should not drop the ball on this right now.
No, 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 no. This, like I said, this was more to just, you know, get a dialogue and, you know, some thoughts out there.
So, if I may.
We'll table it.
You are the chief.
Yeah.
Go back.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put something else together and we'll, you know.
Evaluate and come back to us. The most important thing that I, the message I want to send is that you're the chief. You're the boss.
Oh, it's, it's.
And I bring up Hayward Street.
There's a good, there's a good.
To my good friend.
Yeah.
To my left, who was the chief for many, many years. You're right. I deal with it. I deal with it. I don't look at the other side of it. So, I don't want to tell you how to do your job. You know how to do your job. Go back, think about it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put some more thought into this and.
And I'm not telling him how to do his job, I'm just simply looking at the neighbors. He's got the best aerial unit, I mean.
Yeah.
I think he would have drone over my house in 10 seconds.
Chief, I don't want you walking out of here tonight thinking.
No, listen, you know, and.
We're, we're trying to tell you.
So.
How to do your job.
And I know.
Right now, I'm not.
And I, and I don't, I don't feel that way. And, you know, the only reason this even comes up is because, you know, I answer to the public like you do. You know what I mean?
That's right.
And I'm here, you know, and, you know, the town manager's office, you know, Mr. Valani and, and, you know, his administrative assistants, you know, we get these calls. This isn't something that.
We do.
We just came up with. You know, we're trying to answer complaints.
I think it's pictures sent to me.
Right, and to be responsive to the citizenry. You know, I mean, that's what we're trying to do here. You know, but, you know, I do agree, you know, with, you know, Tom, that we need to do more of an assessment. And I think that once we have some pictures and maybe a video, I think, like a dashboard video of trying to navigate through this, I think it would be, be a little more relevant.
I think an aerial view though, Robbie, too.
Yeah, I'll put the drone up.
Just to see, where do you think these cars are going?
Yeah.
If you move them up this street, are they going to this street? Are they going to that street? Are we simply displacing and creating a bigger headache on those streets where they can still park in front of their cars?
Sure, sure. No, I understand, I understand. And, you know, maybe if, you know, and certainly I defer to the, to the group, if there's some creative way that we can think of trying to mitigate this, you know, I'm all for it.
Maybe different times, parking.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Maybe, maybe just, you know, instead of putting up signs and this, we just amend traffic regs and rules and get the message out there and do an, you know, an information campaign and say, look, on these days, on this time, you've got to be cognizant of this, you've got to be. And, you know, I think that's a good way to go. So, yeah, why don't we just table it for now and we'll get more information.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay. I think we have something else too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the.
We have the chief's day for this one too, yeah.
Town administrative relocation of unused ARPA funds?
Yeah. You remember the board, you voted under the guidance of Zach Taylor, Finance Director. We have ARPA funds, we have a surplus. There was a vote to reallocate funds, the water department projects, et cetera. Well, projects come up within the police department. They're enhancing their radio infrastructure. There is a shortfall, so the request here would be to reallocate $35,638.14. There is money that was in the Police Chief Search Committee funding that is available. As you remember, we used ARPA funds for that. It would be under the authority of the chief, basically to complete the radio upgrade project. I'm sure the chief could amplify more, but basically, that's what is being asked of the board tonight.
Chief?
Yeah, so, as you know, we're redoing our complete infrastructure, the whole radio system. And, you know, we did really, really well here. We ended up getting basically a free radio tower, which is in the millions of dollars with the state, their new radio tower up off of Maple Street, and we're very grateful for that. You know, the portion that we had to pay into that was small in comparison, you know, we're changing everything over the digital. And what happened here with the price increase is no different than what happened with the bridge, if you remember. It was bid out here years ago, right? And then now, when it comes to fruition to build it out, the price and the cost and everything went up. That's exactly what we're dealing with here. So, we have a shortfall in trying to meet that gap with the upgrades. I do have seizure money that I'm going to be using, some of it, to bridge that gap, but I'm requesting the rest of this ARPA money to kind of, you know, help me finish the upgrades that we had already planned to do. And I mean, if everything came in when we ordered it and priced it, this wouldn't be an issue. But you're talking, you know, we priced and started this project a year and a half ago, and we're just now starting to get goods and starting to redo it all now. So, that's how long it took. We're in a really good place with this, you know, Chris George, been just amazing helping us get this infrastructure changed. My staff, Jay Covino, Brian Orosio, working with the different radio vendors, and of course, the state, you know, we have to really thank them for allowing us to get onto that radio tower over here. So, that's where we're at.
Juan?
Yeah, I mean, we've discussed this before about the radio tower. I mean, it's a big public safety issue. So, it's in the best interest of the public, you know, every resident of this community. The inflation, it's $71,000, and that's reality today. You only have to go to the grocery store. So, he's asking for half that money at $35,638.14. The chief and Zach Taylor, the Finance Director, have identified the remaining approximately 50% from different sources, the chief mentioned one, to accomplish this. So, you know, everybody's putting their hands in the pie to try to get this done in the best interest of all of us. So, I'm clearly in favor.
I am too, thanks, yeah. Like I said, the Police Chief Search Committee did a great job with their expenditures, and like I said, only a little over $14,000, we spent that whole nine months. And like I said, they all did a great job, thanks to them. So, like I says, I highly, you know, recommend and second Tom's motion.
So, I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, unless you have comments.
I do.
Thank you.
You know, Chief, one of the things that I hear all the time is, how safe is the town of Milford? The town of Milford's very safe.
I think so.
And I sit here tonight with my two fellow colleagues, and it's our responsibility to make sure that we keep the town safe. And so, this is just another example of what we should do to continue to move this town forward, to keep it safe, because this town is very, very safe. And with that, I will gladly.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we allow the expenditure of $35,638.14 from ARPA funds to support. ARPA funds to support the Police Department radio initiative. And I second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. And Chief, please, continue to do what you're doing.
We will try.
Thanks, Robbie.
Thank you. Take care.
Next agenda item is Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Valani?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three items tonight. The cherry sheet fiscal year '25 is in. The Department of Revenue, Local Services, released it, and it was all agreed to in conference committee. In fact, the governor today signed the budget. Milford will get an increase in unrestricted general government aid of approximately $109,000. Total amount is now $3,760,956. Chapter 70, school funding, has been increased almost $2 million for a total of $48,802,403. And again, the governor has signed the budget today. I want to thank Representative Murray, Senator Roush, for their hard work in getting this done. Just an update, we have one project ongoing right now, the police station flooring installation project. That work has commenced today. New flooring will be installed. I'm told it's only going to take four days, which is a little surprising, but that's good news. Facilities Director Carlos Benjamin is going to oversee this project as he does all other projects. We will be starting the demolition of the lockers and the installation of new lockers within a couple more months. We also are out to bid, as we speak, for new carpeting and flooring in this building, the Town Hall building. So I'll update those as they continue to be done. And then finally, I just want to alert the public, there was an issue at Louisa Lake. I don't know, it caused the water level to be very, very low. I've been informed by Town Engineer Liz Minini and Parks Administrator James Azim that all the repairs that were needed have been completed. They will continue their regular inspections and maintenance to ensure its ongoing functionality so residents and visitors can now once again join the area without any concern. But it did get very low, but there was a mechanical type issue and it's now been fixed. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
I have no questions.
All set. Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item is old business. Anybody have any old business?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
I do not either, Mr. Chairman.
And I do not either. New business first on the agenda is the DoubleTree Hotel, one-day liquor license. DoubleTree Hotel, 11 Beaver Street, Milford, Mass, holding a fundraiser, August 25th, hours 1:00 to 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Expected people are 50. Alcohol will be sold.
Yes, sir.
And it's open to the general public.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a one-day liquor license for the DoubleTree Hotel in Milford, August 25th. The hours I'll change slightly from 12:30 to give them a half hour to set up, to 7:00 PM, one hour to clear the premises.
I second that too, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. Thank you. I turn it back over to Town Administrator, appointment of a part-time senior center?
Yes. HR Director Kristen Melpignano and Senior Center Director Lisa Reagan interviewed for this position. Again, it's a part-time senior center program coordinator. We had 39 applications. The recommendation is for Ms. Jill Lillibridge for the position. She's been recently employed as an engagement activities assistant at a senior living facility for the past two and a half years. She's dealt with morning exercise program, art and music therapy, planning events, creating activities. She's served as a wellness fitness instructor. She's been an event manager, graduate of Red Eye in College with a major in psychology. So she's clearly, clearly has experience to fulfill this kind of position. The request that she be placed at Grade 3 Step 1 under Article 2 with a starting hourly of $27.51.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Jill Lillibridge to the part-time position of Senior Center Program Coordinator at a rate of Article 2, Grade 3, Step 1, $27.51 per hour.
Can I make that a second to it, Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
And I would make that unanimous. Next is the acceptance of a gift from the, for the Fire Department. Milford Fire Department donor is Birch Hill, Great North Property Management Company. The gift is $100.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the gift from Milford Fire Department from Birch Hill, care of Great North Property Management from Exeter, New Hampshire. And that we thank them for sending a monetary gift to the Fire Department to enhance their services.
I second that too, Mr. Chairman, and also what Tom said to it. Nice thank you for that gift.
And I would make that unanimous. Okay, next we have, and Rick, forgive me, a one-day liquor license from St. Mary's Church?
St. Mary's is going to be hosting it. The ABCC now is, for whatever reason, requiring the actual person who's going to be running the event. So it is a little, I took a second look myself, Mr. Chair, so I understand where you're coming from.
It's under Paul.
Pico.
Yeah.
Pico.
Correct.
Okay. So it's a one-day liquor license. The organization is St. Mary, the Assumption Church, 17 Winter Street. It's a 60th birthday party for Paul. It's going to be August 11th.
Yes.
3:00 to 6:00 PM. 50 people in attendance. Alcohol will be given away and no general public.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we allow a one-day alcohol license, liquor license, excuse me, for St. Mary's, the Assumption Church, who are sponsoring an event, 60th birthday party related to the Pico family, on August 11th, 2024. The hours they had, 3:00 to 6:00 PM, I would adjust those again to 2:30 to allow them to set up with alcohol and one hour after the closing, which would be 6:00 PM. So they'd have to have people off the premises at 7:00 PM.
I second that to Mr. Chair, and happy birthday to Paul.
And I would, I would make that unanimous. Okay, next agenda item, invitation to speak. Andrew, anybody? Nobody? Nobody here in the general audience? Okay. Move down to correspondence. Tom, any correspondence?
I do not have any. I know there was only one from the Milford Youth Center. I do not have any myself.
I do not either, Mr. Chair.
And I have one from the Milford Youth Center. Again, thanking our state rep, Brian Murray, and all that he does for the Milford Youth Center, accepting a gift of $60,000 to the Milford Youth Center. Well deserved. Again, thank you very, very much, State Rep, for all you do.
And just to note that their annual golf fundraiser raised $25,000, and there are numerous individuals.
Yeah, there's just so many.
33.
If you want to really look, they can certainly go online. It's posted on.
Yeah, 33 individuals or businesses that jumped in and made a difference for the Youth Center.
Yeah.
And then the MI with Representative Murray, that's $85,000 right there. So thank you to everyone that participated and reached out to help the Youth Center.
Exactly. Just individuals and businesses like this, keep this facility going, and it's very important to keep it going for the type of individuals that it serves. Are you, and like I said, the more, in behalf of donations and whatnot, the less the taxpayers have to pay. It's a good gift.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, full executive session. Motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion that we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I second that, Mr. Chair.
I think unanimous. Good night, everybody. Thank you very much for tuning in. Have a good week.